PM on Thursday, September 1st. Broke that barrier.
I'm getting into fall now.
Mm-hmm.
2022. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Can I have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. So first thing on the agenda is to appoint Tracy Mazur to the Cultural Council.
There's a letter in there from her.
Okay. Do we have any questions about it?
Nope. No.
No opposition? Yeah, okay. All right, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Tracy Mazur to the Warren Cultural Council for a three-year term.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Ihawker, aye.
Vinnie Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations and welcome back to the Cultural Council, Ms. Mazur. All right. So the next thing, Mrs. Leona Rubel, discussion on the payment to the Warren Youth Baseball from the Paul Stokosa Trust Fund.
Stokosa.
Sorry. Stokosa Trust Fund. Okay. So, Ms. Rubel, do you wanna come up? Can you please come up and...
I spoke to Dawn today.
Okay, just...
And she has a little problem. So I said, well, I called Vinnie because I wanted to speak to him and he's not home, which I know they always...
One second. Apologize, but can you say your name?
Oh, Leona Rubel.
And state who you are, you know, you're a resident...
Crappy. Okay. Resident of Lombard Street, Warren.
Thank you.
I spoke to Dawn today and she was a little concerned because the money had been put in Vinnie McCarty's name. And of course, Vinnie really didn't want to do it, but he said, well, he'll put it in the town because they, it'll be easier to take watch. So I called Vinnie today, but he is not available. And I don't think he will be available for a couple of weeks because they go down the tape or someplace. And, um, but when he gets back, I've certainly called about this. And of course, I have to say this too. I imagine that that $1,700 was, uh, Vinnie gave me, okay, to spend it.
Uh, that was something that was presented to us by the Treasurer. And my understanding, there's no cap on it, on the amount. I don't know if it was a verbal thing that there was a cap on, but the will was reviewed and there was nothing in there saying that there was a cap for an amount, for a disbursement of it. I know nobody's, I, from talking with the Treasurer, it wasn't drawn from for a couple of years.
Right.
And then they, they needed stuff. And they actually asked, um, the baseball team actually asked for much more. I believe it's $2,500?
$2,700, yeah.
$2,700. And Dawn actually narrowed it down because it's very clear that it's to be used for Warren residents and for the purpose of Warren only. And it's not to support Westbrook Field. And they went in, narrowed it down, and took anything out that was relating to Westbrook Field. And it was only for Warren to help out our, our residents.
So I will probably be back eventually. And I wanna talk to Vinnie and then see, get his idea about it. Because he would still have a say, obviously.
Yeah, he, he's the executor of the state?
I am the executor of the estate. Yeah.
I was told...
And I have a question about that. If he denies, he doesn't want to do it, then I would think it falls to the executor. But I'll ask Vinnie about it when he comes back.
Okay.
So I called him, left a message, and I'm sure he'll get back to me, so...
All right. Yeah, typically, you were saying it was a thousand, it capped at a thousand per year.
Yeah.
In previous years, nobody asked for anything. And this is the first year that they asked for anything.
Well, I think it was COVID. I don't even think they had baseball. And then, you know, um, so, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be interesting. We didn't know.
The thing that I worry about is people think, huh, the biggest word in this English language is free. And then people don't care. They'll say, oh, well, we can do this and this and this. You know, I was even approached once because they have, take the money and put Doug out. And I said, you know, I don't think so.
You know, I, I didn't, you know, I wasn't aware of a cap or anything like that on there. The request came through, through the Treasurer. Everything was done appropriate. And we seen no concerns, no flags went up saying that we shouldn't do it. So that's why we approved that. They also haven't taken money in a couple of years, too. And Dawn did do her due diligence. And she really cracked down on it to make sure this, just for Warren residents.
Right.
So, um, but yeah, it'd be interesting if you could follow up with us.
Oh, I will. Don't worry, I will.
I know. So, did you have any questions?
Nope.
Do you have...
No, so I mean, if that's the wish, as you're the executor, Ms. Rubel, you know, I think Dawn had requested, you know, just a letter from either Vinnie or from yourself so that we can have it on record, so that wish can be fulfilled in the future.
And I said, I understand perfectly. So, you know, I would, like Dawn, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
I'll be sure of it whenever he gets back.
Yeah. Once we have something in writing, this way we know, like, in the future, whoever takes over or whatever, they know that there's a cap on it. It's in writing there.
And after I'm gone, Ann will take it on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rubel.
Okay. Next thing. Cynthia Baxter, Cemetery Clerk, to answer the question about how many plots are available. Ms. Baxter, can you please take the mic?
Karaoke night?
Yeah, yeah. Pick your song. Open mic night?
Cynthia Baxter, Cemetery Commission Clerk, President Hodger, Social Affairs. Do you want the total? Or would you like a breakdown of what and where they are?
No, I, I think when we asked, we were very, um, we were just asking out of curiosity how many were there. You know, I, I've thought about getting a plot there because I don't have a plot. My wife doesn't have a plot yet. We were looking at maybe...
I would suggest you do that.
Okay, I mean... Am I going quick?
Well, we actually have sold quite a few.
Okay.
We have 171.
Available?
Available.
Okay.
Next year, we're gonna build into our budget to be able to get, um, maybe a surveyor in there to line up the next ones in Section F to make sure that we have what we think we're gonna have. Section B is on a slight slope. So, you know, it's not that there's a lot of flat stuff. So we're gonna have to have someone come in and make sure that we, we have what we think we're gonna have beyond the 171 that we're presenting. And we're actually gonna be taking a 10-foot section below the third row of plots in Section F for a pathway for people to walk or for people to go through without traffic. So that's gonna take a whole section. So at this point, there's 171.
Very good.
And, um, yeah, it is. And now we, now we have regulations that we've set up that allow two cremations per single plot, which, you know, will expand how many people we can serve. You know, one, one full grave per, per plot, but two cremations and one, you know, helps out for people that, you know, by four. We have a lot of plots up there that have a lot of empty graves in them. And they're old, old families. And we actually had a burial, I think it was last month, of someone whose, who was a son that came in and moved into a plot, which was nice. So, but we do have a lot of big plots that were sold back in the day and they're, they're only half-used. There's eight plots there and there's only four, four graves. So anytime someone can prove relation, that's open for them to use. So we certainly do hope that people, um, in the know, you know, that they know they've got someone there that they'll look into perhaps using the ancestral grave that's there. And then they erect their own stone and all that stuff because it is available. So it would be a shame not to have these. But that's about, that's about all we have to say. Does she have any questions for me?
No.
No? Do you have a spot here?
No, I don't.
There you go.
You should.
You should too.
You should get a spot because there's a lot of certainty in having, having a place, knowing where you're gonna be for your family. My husband and I have one in Monson. We have a stone there. And I just think it's a good, it's a good idea. I mean, it's...
Well, it's, it's hard on the family when you don't have it and you're trying to scramble to make all the arrangements. And you, you know...
Right. And if you're a resident in town, I mean, it's a nice place. It's a nice historical place and, you know, it's well kept. Okay?
It's a nice, quiet place where it should be.
It should be.
It should be quiet.
We did get our regulation signs. We're just waiting for the board to get together and to be able to approve them because Mr. Brock couldn't make them last time. He and I are the ones that will approve them. Steve has to, um, understand. They're at the task board. And on there, it says, you know, specifically, no ATBs. We state no. So we're hoping that, that will help with those situations. Okay?
Do you have any questions?
Yes. Cindy, may, may you explain a little bit, having the opportunity to be in front of the mic, what's the process of getting a plot?
Well, you would contact, you can either write to the Cemetery Commission and our, our email is available on the website, or you can call our superintendent, who's Jay McKee. And his number is on the website. And you go and meet with him. He'll show you the map. He'll take you and show you what he has. You tell him how many, if you're looking for a group of four or if you're just looking for a group of two, he'll show you the areas that are open and you can choose which ones you want. And then you just pay for them. $500 for a single.
It's here? Well, in Worcester, I think they were like $5,000 to $10,000 apiece. That's where my mom's buried.
Yeah, that's why...
I know they're very expensive.
And we've only recently, from what I understand, it's only been a few years and we are for $250. So, you know, and it, so it is, it is a good, it is a good price. So we bought mine for my, for my husband and I in Monson. We paid $750. And that was back in 2000. So it is, it is a good price. And we're really pretty, we're, I think we're really very good to the community as far as what our restrictions are, what you can do, what you can't do. So we're pretty lenient. A lot of the places don't allow you to put little memorials or things like that. Some places don't allow artificial flowers. Some places you can only have one pot per grave. So we're really pretty good about what we do for the community. We, we let them make a place where they can go and they can reflect and, you know, just be close to those people that they love.
Very good. Thank you very much. Do you have any more questions?
No, sir.
All set?
No. Thank you very much. Oh, 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 hold on one second. Sorry, one from the public.
Just, just a quick question. Somebody got, when I was working here, somebody got asked me this and I said, I have no idea. But it's a really good question. If somebody purchases a, a plot and their circumstances change over time and they wanna sell it, can they sell it back to the town? How does that work?
Should I repeat her question?
Uh, you, yeah, so everybody can hear.
So the question was, if someone purchases a plot and they, um, their circumstances change and they're not gonna be here anymore, what can they do with their plot? A person can transfer the ownership of the plot by sending a letter to the Commissioner as a notarized letter saying, I care and dusty. Render the use of plot numbers such and such in section such and such to Derek Belize for burials and immorals. How that transpires is none of our concern. But we need to have that documentation saying that this has been transferred to him. And now he is the owner or he has the use of that plot. He and his family and his descendants have use of that plot. There is nothing in our bylaws that say you sell it back to the town. I did question that with the board because I had a similar question. What happens, you know? Because I know that it's for Warren residents only. I don't know if the transfer has to be for Warren residents. But the original purchase is by a resident of Warren only.
So at this point, you would not purchase a plot back from somebody if they had a change in circumstances?
Not at this, not at this point.
Okay.
It would have to be something that we, we discuss amongst ourselves and bring to you to find out if that's what you wanna do because then you have to take the money back out of the town to give back to the, to the person. So they can do whatever they, they can make a transfer, I guess is what I'm saying. So how that transfer, we don't ask them, well, why did you transfer this? Or who, you know, we don't, that's not required. What's required is that there be a legal notarized statement saying that is now this other person's, I've given them the right and responsibility of, of using this for burial and immor. So how or why that takes place? They're good friends, they've been neighbors, or, you know, went to college together, whatever. We don't, we're not privy that it's not part of the law that requires them to tell us why we need to transfer.
Very good.
So I hope that kinda answers the question in some way.
Answer your question?
Yes, it does. I'm, I'm going on my daughter's mantle. She doesn't know it yet, but...
Well, eventually, you're gonna have to go somewhere. You'll be in a yard sale and somebody will say, what a nice space! So, okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Wait one more second. Anybody else have any further questions?
No.
No? Anybody from Zoom? Maybe you have any questions about it?
And if I'm, if I'm mistaken about this, don't, don't hang me. But that's, that's what we understand the law being is that that's all we, all we need is that. As a matter of fact, we had that. We have a woman that's in the process of doing that. All sending us all that documentation. They need to send us the copy, the deed. And then it's all put together. It's basically surrendered to that other person. And as I said, how it, how that gets from point A to point B doesn't, isn't really any of our business. What's our business is that we have the documentation that says this is who now has the right to burial.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Next time, just call.
Okay. Next thing is proclamation for Child Cancer Awareness Month. We gotta make a motion and support it and sign such a document. So we have the document.
Copy in there.
Yeah, I'm gonna read that. Okay. Did you have any questions about it?
No, sounds fine to me. No questions, sir?
No questions?
So the, the reason why this is before you this evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, is I received an email from the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids with Cancer. And a lot of communities in our, in our area have sponsored resolutions, uh, which is before you this evening, similar to what is before you this evening, recognizing September as the month to make aware and, and, and understanding that, you know, the American Cancer Fund and the Kids for Cancer connection. And that's, uh, that's before you this evening.
So it's obviously something that we never wanna have to deal with in our own lives with our own children. But unfortunately, some children go through, um, you know, something like cancer. And it's tragic for a family and it's very difficult to go through. And, you know, my heart goes out to anybody that has to go through that or has gone through it. And, you know, God bless all your children and get them through it safely and make them healthy. This seems like a very good thing. I have no issues. Do you have anything to say?
After we sign it, can, can I take a picture so we can post it on Town Alert?
Yeah, you may wanna read it into the record, the, the proclamation. You know, and I will also send a copy to the American Cancer Fund saying that we, that the, that the Town of Warren also sponsored it. So the town will be listed as a sponsor of, of the awareness.
Okay. Do you wanna read it?
Sure. Should I make the mo, motion first and then read it, or?
Uh, you could read it and then, then make the motion.
All right. Whereas, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection reports that cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. This tragic disease is detected in more than 16,000 of our country's young people every day. An estimated 400,000 children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. Whereas, one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants, children, and teens will suffer from the long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. Whereas, founded nearly 30 years ago by Steven Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., and Lions Club International are dedicated to helping these children and their families. Whereas, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provides a variety of vital patient psycho, psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at UMass Memorial Children's Medical Center in Worcester, Boston's Children Hospital, Tufts Children's Hospital, Shriners Children's Boston, Dana Farber Children's Cancer Center, Mass General Hospital for Children, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. Whereas, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor toy distributions, Laughter Noon, Laughter is Healing, positive appearance programs, pet-assisted therapy, KCC Supercar Experience, educational programs, and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now, therefore, the Warren Board of Selectmen do hereby proclaim that the month of September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the Town of Warren, Massachusetts. We encourage all our residents to recognize and participate in its observance. All right, so I'll make a motion to proclaim the month of September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the Town of Warren.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Ihawker, aye.
Vinnie Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Do you have the official copy?
You want it now?
Sure. Derek, can... What?
Blue pen.
Oh, for God's sakes. I know, I put it in the drawer. Nonconformist.
Okay. Did you have anything else to say about it?
Nope.
All right. Discussion impossible vote for premium pay to former town employees who worked during the pandemic. I'm gonna have to make a motion on this. So we have... Who would be receiving it?
So that's the spreadsheet I came up, that prorates it.
Hey. Do you wanna give us background?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. In the packets this evening, you will see that this item was continued from the last time that we had met. Rich and myself had, had worked on, primarily Rich developed the, the software and the, the rubric of, of getting the dollar figures correctly. So thank you, Rich, for, for, for doing that. But we were able to take the list that we had at the... But we were able to take the list that we had at the last meeting, pare it down between full-time and part-time, and then we're able to prorate the amounts for their time of service. And that you will see in your packet with the list of eligible former employees that were available to be paid. You will also find in your packet a memo saying that when we did an analysis of what was paid in February of '24, there were some current employees that were missed that the board had already approved at the last meeting. You'll see that expense being sent to the town accountant to pay out those individuals that were approved by the board two weeks ago. You will also see a spreadsheet that signifies what is currently left under the first round of ARPA funds that have been allocated to the town. There's approximately $18,801.39. That's taking into consideration a little increase for the grit screw anticipation for that going out. And there's still some monies that were, need to be paid out for tie-in bond, for the specifications and procurement of the grit screw that still have to be held and encumbered until we receive those bills. But you also have the $5,000 that was already allocated for the current employees is in there. The tablets that were approved at the last meeting came in a little bit below anticipated cost there. So those are all factored in there. Obviously, what the town has already paid out for CARES Act money, for ARPA money, I should say. So there is some availability to pay the funds if the board so chooses. The total expense would be $14,087.
Okay. So I want to ask the unallocated available balance. All right, I want to make sure. So this submitted column is just what's been spent?
Spent, yeah.
Okay. But that doesn't really factor into, oh, amount spent. So the 603 is what, the submitted or the allocated? 603, 506, 18?
That is the total submitted. That's if you take the, that's what has been paid out so far.
Okay. It's just a little confusing.
Yeah.
The sheet, okay.
Wait a second. If that's the amount that was paid out so far?
No, I'm sorry. Amount spent is 600. You were talking about which 600 figure, Rich?
The one right above it.
Oh, okay, the one above it. Okay, no, that is not, the amount below is what is spent.
The 604.69?
Yes.
Okay.
The remaining balance.
What's the 603, then?
The 603 is what is, if you add up all of the allocated. What is allocated?
Okay. And then we only have, so we only have 3,000 and some change, then? That hasn't been spent in that?
Right. So you'd have, a total unallocated is $18,801.
So now we have everything aside for a total of $18,801.39.
Yes. This is on the first round. This has nothing to do with second round.
And so we, that tie-in bond number of 16,000 is still in there, right? It's just it hasn't been built?
The difference is 29,000 has been allocated, but you've only spent 12.
Yeah, okay.
So you still have 16,175 left.
Okay. Yeah, it would be helpful to have a total under each of these columns. So total allocated, total submitted.
Sure.
And then we know what the balance is.
All right.
So Rich, basically the 18,000 would go underneath that one. And the 179 would be under that one.
Just speak up.
You know, 179 is what?
Your 18,000 would come over here. And the 179 would be under this one.
Okay, yeah, but I want totals under that. So total allocated.
These are your totals.
Yeah, I'm just saying under, under each column.
Okay, I get it.
Yep. Okay. So we can cover these expenses?
If the board so chooses, yeah.
Okay.
And still pay for the tie-in bond? I mean, that's what's confusing about this.
Oh, yeah. The tie-in bond figure is there, but it's an estimate. So, I mean, the grit screw is estimated at 145,000.
Right.
The procurement and the specifications was at 29,000. That's a solid number. We're just waiting on bills to cover that.
Right, okay.
But the 145 was not solid. When we originally started this, we were at like 129.
Yeah, okay.
So now, because costs and supply chain issues have gone up, they're saying 145, but that's still just an estimate.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're hoping that.
If anything, if we do go over, we still have the second round.
We still got some second round money.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Can you briefly describe how you've come up with this? And prorating it?
So if you take, for example, the first line, if you take the pay, okay, and you divided it by the 190, okay, you would get $2.81. And then you take the $2.81 times the 190, and you're getting your 5.33. So the $2.81 is your per diem per day. And then you're, based upon how many days they worked during the pandemic.
So if you look at the top there, COVID started on March 13th, '20.
Yep.
We paid people roughly two years later. So there was 713 days included in the pay. So then if you, so that's kind of the factor used to prorate everything. So in the case of the first one, he was hired after COVID started. So he has 190 days from the July date to the February pay date that we approved.
But he left earlier than that, like 23 days.
He did, didn't he? All right, maybe I'll have to check the spreadsheet then. Yeah, maybe that's not right.
So that 190, that 190 is the days in which the pandemic started to when he left?
Right. I have to make sure that the spreadsheet did that, though, now that I'm looking at this. I don't know. I accounted for a later hire date. The fact that he was hired after the March 13th date. I'm going to have to go through and make sure I counted when they left early, because I don't know that I did that.
Okay.
So there's 713 days equals 2,000. Right?
For a full-time, yep.
And these are the days?
So, yeah, because if somebody worked from March 13th to February 1st, 20, well, February 24th.
So does it really matter when they were hired? It should only matter from 3/13 until the time they left.
It only matters from when the period of COVID started to the time that they left. That's what you're paying.
Right, okay, yeah.
So that's the 190.
Okay, right.
But are we sure that's 190 days from the time he started to the time he left?
No, from COVID started until the time he left.
The start date really, his hire date really has nothing to do with it.
But it's from the start date of COVID?
Correct, yeah.
From the time he left, it was 190 days.
Correct.
Hmm, no, no.
But, yeah, he didn't start. He started after COVID started.
It's the date of hire or the COVID date, whichever is later. Because you're not going to get paid pre-COVID.
Right.
Right.
And you're not going to get paid if you weren't employed on March 13th, 2020. So he, so this person was July of '21. So he was almost a year and a quarter after COVID started. Right? That's when he was hired. And then he would stop. No, I think Karen's right. He would stop at the 1st of February, not the 24th of February.
Right. He would stop at when they left.
Correct. So the math is?
Is that 100, did you do, is that 190 days? Did I do it right? I mean, it's been a while since I worked on this, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I could have seen.
We could double-check, but your math, it's okay.
Okay.
You know, your 190 equals, I checked the math, it's okay.
Okay.
You just have to make sure that if they started after the COVID date and left early, then, you know, how many days they worked during this COVID period?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah. So like the next person started in 2019.
Right.
But their pay is not going to start until the COVID start.
Correct.
And they would go to the 1st of February, '22.
And when they left.
Yeah.
So these numbers are off, then?
Nope.
No, they're good. So 690 days. He almost made it 713 days. He left a little, he left before the end date.
He left 23 days.
Before the end date.
Before the end date, yep. That's, that works out.
I thought the other one, the fourth one, get 5,554 days?
Length of service. They started in 2006 and left in 2021.
Yeah.
So 15 years.
Yeah, but July 15th, 2021.
Except.
Length of service really doesn't have anything to do with the pay.
No.
I just put it in there in case we were going to restrict it by length of service or something like that.
Okay.
But you can see maximum length of service days is zero, which means everybody's in. If we had said you had to work six months, then that number where it says zero would be 180. And then it would knock people out. Like, there's a person on here who worked like 79 days.
Following it because if we're going strictly from time COVID started to February 24th is the cutoff, that's when it ends.
Well, no, it's when they left.
Right, or before, when they left.
Yeah.
So this person, the fourth one, left on July 15th, 2021.
Yeah.
So that's?
So they only had 489 days of pay, of possible per diem pay for premium eligibility.
Right.
That should be the difference.
Okay, so you got COVID days, 489 days.
Yeah.
And that's what you used.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, now I'm tracking.
So you basically have 489 divided by 713 times the part-time rate.
So as far as the length of service column applies, nothing, it has nothing to do with here.
Yeah, information.
We're only looking at for the COVID days and pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you, you know, I think the board wanted to stay within the parameters of when it started, when the pandemic was declared, to when the pay date was done.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
And prorate that amount.
Yeah. And you and Tammy have both gone through this?
I looked at it, and Tammy, the accountant, had looked at it. And we both came up with those figures.
I made sure there was a lot of double checking. Okay. So neither the accountant nor the treasurer are here just to weigh in on this? They're?
Um, no. Both departments are very, it's that time of the year that is really crucial to do our year-end close. So they're both very swamped. I know Dawn is doing an awesome job with just, you know, just being her alone. And it's tough. You know, these are the, this is the original list that I had gotten from Dawn. And I kind of took out some of the people that were elected officials and pared it down a little bit, called it. And then I discovered some current people that were not offered it as well. So, I mean, I don't have any, I never received an official list, per se, other than the original list that I got from Dawn. And trying to pare down from what I got from Tammy and from Dawn, and this is what we've came up with. And these were identified as full-time and part-time people by the accountant.
Well, it appears to be fair. I think during that time, they should have received something. I think my holdup with it, when last we discussed about this, is that it could interfere with retirement benefits in a way for some people. Did we get clarification on that?
Well, it's going to be taxable income. There's no way to determine, you know, the impacts that it could have on an individual or their retirement. And Dawn is trying to make sure that she can process all of the payments, making sure that, you know, we have whatever addresses are left on file so that these individuals can get their checks. But it will be just paid out as taxable income.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
Nope.
Do you have anything?
No, sir.
Do you have anything else, Rob?
No.
Okay. Again, I think these people worked during COVID. They should get something. We gave everybody else something. It's only fair. Just because people chose to go to a different career or retire or whatever reason, they shouldn't be penalized because they were doing what's best for them and their families or they've worked a long, long time for our community and it was time for them to sit by a pool or a beach somewhere for a little while. You know, again, my only concern was if it would affect somebody's retirement in the negative, if it was causing somebody a problem. Because when we vote this, we have to do all or nothing. So it's for everybody or nobody. You know, I don't foresee anything affecting anybody's retirement in a dramatic manner because it's not like we're turning around and saying, hey, you're getting $50,000 and it's going to throw off your retirement way off. You know, there's no payment. What's the highest? Probably the highest one was? No.
It'd be the second line.
The second one is $1,935. That's the highest payment because it's been prorated.
Right. The max, you can't get 2,000 and you can't get 1,000. You're always going to get something just below that, so.
Because it's prorated.
Yeah.
So it seems to be done fair because people, even though they left, they still didn't work the whole time that our full-time or part-time employees, they didn't work through the whole time during COVID with our town. So it wouldn't be fair to pay them the same amount that somebody that worked completely through it and stayed with the town. So this is a fair way of doing it for our current employees that have stayed throughout the whole thing, but also giving But also giving something to employees who have worked during it and done a lot. So I, I, I think it's a good option.
Okay.
Have anything else to say?
No, sir.
Nope.
Public, have any questions?
Nothing else, Tim.
Okay. Want to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion to accept the prorated pay according to this sheet for employees that had left during COVID.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hocker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And we're going to pay out the total fourteen thousand, eighty-seven dollars to prior employees. That's to include the five thousand for the five employees that did not receive this payout, um, this premium pay. For some reason, they were just overlooked. So we're making that up to them now. All right? What's up, Rich? You want to come up to this?
Yep. Rich, I got a question. I filed a form request asking for the name of all the boys that didn't get, uh, payment. Was withheld from the county, I don't know why.
Who was it, Paul?
It's the first of my knowledge. You'd have to take that up to town clerk.
You got the form.
All four of your requests go through the town clerk?
I did, I did it through town clerk and asked for all, the records, and I never received any of them. I assumed there wasn't any, and then I called, I called, maybe they had. The other boy request I asked was the, uh, the, the approval of the, the payday that you guys had chosen as the cutoff date, and I received nothing for that. Rich, you just alluded to the fact that you guys approved it for that.
So we have no PII in here or anything like that?
I didn't get that either, so I don't know if you guys will tell that.
We have no PII in here or anything like that? This is public records now?
Yeah, this is public record.
Guys, have any objections to begin this one?
Well, I mean, you should go through the proper channels.
I'll do it through the proper channels, I don't mind. I just wanted to know, you know what I mean, I just, you know, I, I didn't, I asked a bunch of stuff. Part of the stuff didn't come up, you know what I mean, so I'll ask, I'll do it through the proper channels, no problem.
Yeah, go back to Lori and ask her.
Yeah.
Uh, the pay date would be in the minutes.
It was, and I, I looked through the minutes and I looked through all of that, any of that, so.
Okay.
That's the other thing I was looking for, so.
All right, yeah, back to Lori.
All right. Anything else?
I guess.
All right. So moving on, um, we're on number eight now. Uh, review of the proposed draft letter between Warren and Westbrook Field Boards of Selectmen regarding the request for state audit. This is in regards to the school. Okay. Do they have a school committee meeting before then?
Um, it's, it's tough to say, Mr. Chairman, uh, because, you know, they only post their meetings, and I've communicated this to, uh, to Westbrook Field. You know, it's hard to understand how they post their meetings. It's, you know, they have to do the forty-eight hour window, but they don't post it all, you know, out. And there's meetings that are sporadic, you know, that they may have here or there. I don't know what their meeting schedule is. Trying to determine that, um, but this, this draft was also shared with Becky in the Westbrook Field Committee. And they are going to be, um, reviewing it on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you, sir.
At least that's what I'm...
Yeah, they don't have a meeting before then. Their next one is September nineteenth.
Okay.
At six thirty PM.
So, I mean, I just, just, I checked their website and their website wasn't updated, so, um...
Yeah, they do one a month?
I know they're having a meeting tonight on another matter, but, um, I don't know what, uh...
Yeah, they don't have a scheduled meeting tonight. Not on here.
They have a meeting about the regionalization. I was supposed to be there, but I didn't have me.
Yeah, but this should be on their schedule then.
Well, it's a different committee.
It, it, it doesn't matter. They should have posted me, it should be publicly put out there so people can attend it. If they're putting out a, you know, school committee meeting schedule and they're not even posting the meetings, so people can know when they're supposed to be at them.
Yeah, they may post it just, you know, within the forty-eight hour time frame and, um, you know. But this is just a draft. Um, I shared it with Westbrook Field. I'm sure Becky can speak on it as well, um, but she's...
Have you had a chance to look at it?
So that's, if I may, um, so that is on our...
Can you just, so they can, everybody can hear. The mic doesn't pick up back there very well, so.
Rebecca Sarah, um, the executive secretary to the board of selectmen in Westbrook Field. So Jim and I did talk, we reviewed the letter, went over that, added a couple of things, you know, the cutoff date and so forth, which may now have to be altered. But, um, that is on our agenda for Tuesday night, so I don't see where, you know, I think last Tuesday's meeting was very fruitful and, and I think the board would certainly approve that.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to at least give them an opportunity to have a, a meeting. So if we can change the meeting date.
Sure.
For the cutoff, so at least they can have a meeting and they can get back to us probably the next day or...
Or give them a week after their next meeting.
Well, you, you, if I may, you may also want to ask to be placed on the agenda, quite honestly.
Yeah, I would agree. I would hand deliver this. I wouldn't just, I mean, you could send it, but I would also hand deliver it to that meeting.
Well, you, you want to make sure you, they have an opportunity to vote on it. If you hand deliver it, they might not be able to vote at that meeting.
No, that's not it. Send it ahead of time, get on their agenda.
And bring a copy with.
Yep, we can do that.
Just, just, we could do a joint, uh, email if you wanted, from, from, you know, BOS in Warren and BOS in Westbrook Field saying, you know, we want this on our agenda, which apparently is scheduled for, what, the nineteenth?
The nineteenth, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So kind of force it ahead.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. So, thank you very much. So, yeah.
Yep.
Do you want to see the schedule?
Sure.
Appears they only have one meeting per month.
Okay.
That's posted.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Today's meeting is the first meeting, they don't offer Zoom?
There's no Zoom?
There's no Zoom for this meeting?
So they didn't post it?
I, I believe they posted because they have from all three, um, towns. I don't know where they posted. But I was, I was gonna, I was gonna join and just listen to the meeting while I was here, but there's no Zoom for tonight's meeting, which has been Zoomed all meetings before. So first they put it on a day where Warren's selectmen can't go because we have our meeting and I told, hey, I can't go because it's Thursday at six, we need, but that didn't matter. They still did it on Thursday.
Okay.
Is it on their site?
I found that. Um, if you Google Quaybog Regional School District School Committee, they have like their own separate webpage because they have the regular school committee, then I think like some, uh, like two or three subcommittees that also all hold meetings and they have the schedule for the whole school year for all these different subcommittees.
So it's a whole separate schedule, but it is posted?
Yeah, so I, I couldn't find it on the regular Quaybog website.
Yeah, that's the one I went to, yeah.
But when I Googled Quaybog Regional School Committee, that came up with school committee site tells you, you know, kind of like the town page, who's on the school committee, the email addresses, and then it has their school committee schedules. And that's where I got that from, so we can start broadcasting their meetings.
They would still fall into public meeting, honestly, correct? So they should be posting it on the board at the town halls.
Um, I think that they, they, because it's a regional school district, they opted for, um, they, they enrolled in an online, um, online postings. I think, I think they can do that. Is there a regional school district?
You were wrong during that. Did you know anything about that?
I, I believe you answered on that.
But they would have had it taken a vote. I was told that they took a vote to, to do that.
So there's something with the same schedule that we have.
Sorry to keep, might as well just sit up here.
You can easily find that answer out if you go to the dog, the Division of Open Government, because they have to declare that. And they cite the website, their website is the official place.
Okay.
So.
For posting meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do have, so they have the regionalization subcommittee of July twenty-seventh and September second.
September second?
That's wrong.
It is, isn't it? September second, twenty twenty-two, regionalization agenda.
Today's the first.
Yeah.
Unless I'm wrong.
No, I think you're correct.
Did I miss a day somewhere?
You're correct.
Nope, even their posting, when you click on the link, says September first, but their posting does not say September first. It says September second.
So you literally have to open it up.
Yeah.
To see it.
I mean, if you just looked at this, you would go tomorrow.
Yeah.
And there would be no, you know, no one.
So the emails is meeting nine, one. We'll be meeting at the Innovation Center at six o'clock. Talked about the agenda, that's about it, no. That's the email. Tonight's meeting.
Did say Thursday. But again, if you were to look at the site, it's posted for tomorrow.
Yeah.
Did they give a reason why they weren't doing it Zoom?
No, no, they, usually they, they just offer Zoom, but this one, this time they didn't. And I, when they proposed Thursday last week, I emailed them and said, hey, Warren's selectmen meets on Thursday, so I can't go. I have no response. They just did a meeting on Thursday today, this time.
Do they usually meet on Thursdays?
No, Wednesdays.
So they made a meeting when you couldn't attend. They posted it incorrectly. And they got rid of Zoom.
Yeah.
I'm seeing flags shoot up here.
So, again, if I may, perhaps the September nineteenth, that, that's a Monday, correct?
Yeah.
So maybe Warren BOS and Westbrook Field BOS can attend the school committee meeting. We'll just post, unless that conflicts with planning board because that would take all three of you out.
It's, uh, Monday, right?
No, no, we're, we're the twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
So.
So, yeah.
Right?
So it looks like you got a date for the nineteenth?
Oh, really?
Okay, so you think all, all six of us show up?
Right, right.
Or eight of us?
I'll get my guys to...
Okay.
I, I think that's really the only way you're going to get any kind of...
Yeah, I agree. Show of force.
Yeah, absolutely. Safety in the air.
Yep.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
All right.
So we want to be on the agenda and, um, I'm good with the letter.
Mm-hmm.
We'll, um, sign that, get it out to them and, and, uh, show up on the nineteenth. As long as...
And what do we want? The response, a response date, like a week after? I mean, you know.
If they vote that day, they're not going to have, they're not going to wait. It's not going to take a whole week if they vote on the nineteenth.
Then I would just change that sentence to, um...
Twenty-six, uh...
Well, no, if you want them to vote that day on it, then I, you don't even need that sentence.
Okay.
Or you need to change it to, we would appreciate a vote at the September nineteenth school committee meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Therefore, we are requesting to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can change that around, yeah.
All right, sounds good. Westbrook Field, you have it in time, you think? All right. Anybody have any other questions about the, the letter that we're giving to the school committee? No? All right, moving on. All right, authorize the, authorizing the town administrator sign-off on expenditures coming from the Shepherd Building Office Improvements and Expense Fund. Requesting to make a motion to approve the town administrator, approve those, uh, expenses.
Before the, the funds are expended?
Before the funds are expended. Okay. Do you guys have any questions about it?
Nope, it's fine with me. I'm fine.
Any questions? All right, I want to do a motion. I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the town administrator sign-off on any expenditures coming from the Shepherd Building Office Improvement and Expenses Fund.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hocker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. You get the authorization, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and number ten, create a gift account for programs and events for the town veterans. Uh, this is for the Veterans Council?
Yes.
Okay, now, I'm pretty sure, I know you said that we did do that. I thought that was the purpose of creating the expense account in the first place.
Yeah.
But it was too specific?
Yes, yep, so, um, there's, I, again, I had spoken to Becky about this, uh, uh, last week and, um, when the Board of Selectmen created the gift account, they created it for, to collect donations for Leaks Across America. And when the Cornerstone Bank, um, because of the Board of Selectmen has, was an advocate on, on behalf of the Veterans Council, was able to, um, ask for a donation. And we subsequently changed the, um, the language around in the press release for the Veterans Council to, for, for the account for programs and events for, for town veterans. The five thousand dollars from when I was talking to, to Becky, um, she said that, you know, if she, if there was less restrictions for the, for the veterans to have some more flexibility to use the funds, I said, that's not a problem. We would just have to create a gift account. The Board of Selectmen would have to create a gift account for that purpose.
Now, can't we just use the same account that we already created, but expand that purpose?
Uh, well...
Instead of creating a whole bunch of different accounts?
Well, you've created an account, uh, that's already been created for the intended purpose. I'm not sure if they've collected any funds for that intended purpose.
The last time I checked with Becky, with Tammy, there was four hundred and ninety-five dollars already in that account for that purpose.
Yeah, they might want to keep it separate then.
So we have to keep it separate then?
Well, it's probably better, right?
All right, um...
Do you have other questions? No, no questions, I guess. No questions.
So, if I may, Chair of the Veterans Council, um, so we would really like to keep that line item separate from everything else. Separating from our operating, um, budget, which is the three thousand, that goes towards the Purple Heart Breakfast, that goes towards Memorial Day Parade, our cards at Veterans Day, at Christmas, that we send out. So we're, so we're just trying to have, that keeps us on track on this, where we are for what we need. So we're, so we're just trying to have, that keeps us on track on this, where we are for what we need for our programs that we have going now. This new one that we have, which hopefully will be created tonight, is the donation, the startup donation of a veteran programs and events, which is kind of a little bit, we're on a brush and keeping the reefer separate, because we'd like to really kind of track that.
Okay.
If, if possible. And, and, you know, that could go to scholarships or, or, you know, because we have several different things going on, so that's the only reason why. I mean, it's fairly easy in the accounting system, so it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a great, it shouldn't be a heavy lift at all.
I was just looking at making it as easy as possible.
Oh, I know.
So you don't have a bunch of accounts everywhere and.
No, 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 no. It's just, you know, we're, we're accepting donations. We just want to be careful that it's allocated for the, the right purpose, that's for what.
So they'll have two gift accounts.
So what the intent is for.
Do we need a budget line item then for this new one?
No, I don't think we need, no, we don't need a budget, because that's just a donation, no, so.
Just creating the account.
Because we did a budget line item for the reefer account, right?
No.
No.
No, that got left out.
Right, well, I.
That got omitted.
I know it did, but is that the intent, that would have to be done at the next meeting?
No, no. So you guys can create a gift account by a vote.
Yeah.
So, but creating a whole line item budget in the on the bus budget, that's town meeting. So, so we have our.
We don't need to do that?
No, so.
Okay.
Under your, it's held under your budget.
Okay.
It's held under your budget. It's Memorial Day slash veteran programs. So it's, it's budgeted for $3,000. Like I said, that's Memorial Day, Purple Heart Breakfast, the cards, flags, whatever we buy. So within that budget, Tammy created the reefer, and we, we have that other gift account where we took in money for scholarships. So, yeah, I, I think we want to keep that reefer one. So, I mean, if you wanted to co-mangle that one with our first gift account, I mean, it's, that's fine. That, we don't have a problem. We just want the reefer very well defined.
So you, you'd have two gift accounts?
Yeah.
One you've already created with the reefer, and then this new one, which the $5,000 will go into.
Wouldn't that be a third one if they're creating it?
There's no third one.
Yeah, the gift account for the reefer.
Reeefer's done.
Yeah, that was created.
So that we have the other gift account.
So this would be a third one then?
So we don't need another one?
No, we don't, right, that can go into the scholarship one.
Okay.
The reefer one is the one that we want clearly broken out.
Okay, so you already have another gift account?
Yes.
Okay.
So we don't need to create it?
So this donation just goes into that original gift one?
Okay, all right.
All right.
And the original gift account, was it, was it for anything specific?
Programs.
Programs, okay.
Yeah, programs.
So we would just be creating a new one for the same exact thing that you have?
So we don't need.
All right, let's, all right.
All right.
All right, yeah, that's what I was trying to do.
Our thing is we want our reefer one separate. Because that's a whole nother thing that we have to report and, you know, that's, that's the only reason why.
Okay, so we don't need to create that one?
No, but we will accept the money.
Well, that was the next thing. We do have a check for you guys for the amount of $5,000 from Cornerstone Bank. And that is for the purpose of the Veterans Council. So we do have that, and I think that was the accept, the next thing on the agenda, unless you want to talk more about this.
No, no, we're all.
Because the next thing on the agenda is to accept the check. And we have to vote on that?
Yeah, do we?
We have to motion to accept the check?
Really?
And present it to the committee?
Okay.
So. All right, so if you want to make a motion to accept the check from Cornerstone Bank.
No, let's not accept it. I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the check for the Veterans Committee, um, for.
And present to the Veterans Committee.
And present it to the.
The Veterans Council.
Counsel. Oh, it's council, yeah.
Yeah, they.
All right, I'm going to start all over. I'm going to make a motion to accept the check for the Veterans Council, which will go toward programs and events.
Second?
Okay, all in favor.
Richai Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. And do we just give this to Dawn afterwards, and she puts it in the account?
There'll be a turnover?
Or do we have to sign it?
You have to do a turnover?
Is it to the Town of Warren?
It is.
It says Town of Warren.
Town of Warren.
So that would technically come to us if we do a turnover, both Tammy and Dawn.
Okay, so we just give it to them now?
You can do that.
Great, well, here's your check for $5,000. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Derek. Thanks, Derek.
Anytime, Becky.
Congratulations.
All right, thanks, Derek.
You're welcome.
If you can, um.
Did you want the envelope?
Oh, sure. If you can, um, just forward me, come and contact the creation team and send a thank you.
Yeah.
That'll, that'll help out a great deal. You know, this year we were able to do about four $1,000 scholarships.
That's good.
Really nice graduate seniors in town. That's, I mean, it's a drop in the bucket for, for, uh, the cost of college nowadays, but it's, it's a nice little.
Everybody helps.
Yeah.
Pay for a book.
I, yeah, exactly. That's going to expire probably before the, the second semester is over. But, um, I, when we were, I was going through the program, the, the night of awards night, and, um, we gave the, the largest, uh, there were 250, 500, you know, so I'm pretty happy that we were able to do $1,000, so.
Very good. Now, you guys are doing a great job, and thank you very much for everything that the Veterans Council does for the veterans in town. You know, it's really appreciated.
I think the Purple Heart Breakfast went off really good again this year, you know, as, as you can see, David, you've been coming to them. We've been losing, uh, Purple Heart veterans, you know, so even since the dedication of the plaque in October, within three weeks, we lost two. So, um, it's a stark reminder of how fragile life is, and we really need to make sure we, we thank our veterans.
Absolutely, you know. A lot of them have paid with, uh, not only their lives, but losing other things within their, their function, functional abilities, you know, may have been wounded in action, and they, they suffer through that for the rest of their lives, trying to get past that. And, you know, eh, the least we can do is recognize them for what they've done for our community. I really appreciate that you guys are doing that. It's a very noble cause.
It's, it's an honor to do it, really is. I've said it.
And I know you guys do a lot, so.
Um, you know, one of the things, too, that I always like to highlight, too, is it's not just, take yourself, David, as a veteran, but it's, that answers the call, whether it be police fire, EMS, or especially veterans, but it's the families, too, that answer the call, because they're paying the same price, if not higher sometimes, that, um, of, you know, things that we don't always think of. So every time the town goes in for a fireman, my son-in-law's a fireman, so, you know, my daughter's answering that call, too. So certainly same with those who are veterans.
Oh, it's a, it's a life that.
And we thank them, too.
It's very difficult for, like you said, the families and, you know, the children of those families, because a lot of times the children are too young to understand what's going on or what's happening. And it's, it's hard to explain to why mom or dad is, is not here for the next year, because they go and help somebody else.
Right, right. You know, as a matter of fact, right before COVID, right before the lockdown, everything hit the fan, um, with Karen and Jim's help through their church, we were able to do a first responder dinner, which we would like to do again at some point.
I agree.
And we invited veterans, police, fire. We had 100, and I better be careful, because we might have exceeded occupancy, but 100 and something. Something, people that attended down at the senior center, it was a wonderful event, it really was. And it was really to, not just those particular ones, but really the families, to, to loop them in, because like I said, you know, I come from a fire family and, um, you know, we all into the home, so.
So, well, thank you very much.
Very well. The next time you're going to peel potatoes, but that's okay.
Just call me, I'll come and do it. I have no problem. And it wouldn't be work the first time that I was working kitchen duty.
Take it, you're right, you're right.
Do you do latrines, too?
We have, yes, yeah. We don't have janitors that run around and clean them for us. And believe me, if you feel an inspection, yeah, it, the weekend's gone. And, you know, and I've been on that, you know, side where I've had to field guys for inspections, being a sergeant, and in the Marine Corps, we're very detailed, very. And, um, you try to give.
You're hired.
You, you try to be, you give, give a little, um, a little bit, you know, but sometimes when you know you have that lieutenant, or that captain, or a major that's coming in, and he wants to make sure everything is crisp and perfect, you know, everybody pays the price going down. So, you know, it's tough.
And I want to extend our thanks to, um, from Judy and Lloyd Rice, they're council members as well, but they're enjoying tonight, uh, at the game of the Woo Socks.
Oh, nice, very good.
They wanted to extend their thanks.
Thank you very much.
They picked a great night, so. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next thing is warrants and bills.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Number 17 payroll, $50,994.06. Number 18 vendor, $432,420.73. Number 19 payroll, $307.33. Number 20 payroll, $60,237.96. Number 21 vendor, $88,040.13.
Second?
All in favor.
Richai Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Did you verify that? These? No, the one I, the correction before I read these. Looks like a photo copy. We're just verifying an amount. There's an additional amount that I'll read off. It's not.
Yeah, it is 389.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, Northeast IT Monthly Bill, $2,383. Uh, Northeast IT Battery Backup, $669.99. Northeast IT for $299.99. KP Law, $4,387.77. Town of Warren Sewer, $990. Kelco, $270.50. Verizon, $137.24. Marlin Leasing, $1,107.23. National Grid Streetlights Credit of $22,337.71. Comcast for $28.26. Amazon for iPads, or, yeah, or tablets, $683.17. And then Easy True Value, $18.17.
I have one question about this. Why are we paying Town of Warren Sewer? It's our sewer department.
Well.
Schools pay it, you know.
Yeah.
Because they're a separate entity, maybe?
Enterprise fund, yeah.
Because it'll come out of our tax bill. They're a separate entity.
I'd also like to mention, too, this National Grid Streetlight Credit is a cumulative credit.
Cumulative.
Yeah, so this is a little misleading, so it's not like every meeting, we're getting $22,000.
Yeah, we only got like 599 this time.
Yeah, maybe that's the better number to have to read.
Okay, you want me to do that?
Yeah.
$599 credit.
You said 590 million.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did. I'm like, they're being very generous with this streetlight program. All right.
All right, well, that's my motion. I need a second.
So now I'm disappointed?
Oh, yeah.
National Grid's not giving us 599.
No, they're not.
All right.
Second?
All in favor.
Richai Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. We'll pay the bills.
Do you want me to go get the one for Joyce, since Derek is here?
Oh, yeah, yeah, let's just, yeah. Okay, we have another bill that I can't participate in. It's the Zoom bill.
Okay.
It's under Joyce.
Just make sure you say you recuse yourself.
Yeah.
Okay, we have one more bill to pay, and it's to Joyce Ihocker. Uh, and it's a reimbursement amount for Zoom meeting. In the amount of $15.93. Can I have a second on it?
Second?
Okay, all in favor.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Richai Hocker, I recuse myself.
Okay, the motion passes with the vote of Derek Bellis and David Dufresne. There you go. Do we need a second?
Probably sign that one individually.
We get it right here.
Yeah, I took your name off of it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Put the staple right under my signature.
Make it easy and sign at the top.
Sir?
You're welcome.
Okay. Minutes, approved minutes from August 11th, 18th, and 23rd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 11th, 18th, and 23rd, 2022.
Second?
All in favor.
Richai Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, new business. Anybody have anything?
No.
Derek?
No, sir.
I'm just my report, can I get copies though?
All right, now new business?
Afterwards, because I have.
Moving on to old business. Anybody have any old business?
No old business.
No, sir.
Okay, no old business. Okay, moving on to town administrator report.
Good evening.
Mr. Ferrari, you're up.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. Um, for you this evening, in your packets, you'll have, uh, kind of a breakdown summary of my report for this evening. Um, I have a couple few things to report on to the board, uh, this evening. On August 31st, RFPs went out for, um, the grit screw at the sewer plant. They are due back on September 28th at 11:00 a.m. And as indicated, uh, before, tie-in bond is handling the procurement of that. Uh, you can go directly onto the tie-in bond website, uh, to submit to your proposals and your responses. That will also be advertised, that's advertised on the town's website currently. It has been advertised, uh, and will be advertised in the, in the newspaper, uh, as well as, uh, the central registrar, uh, and the combis for Massachusetts procurement. Also, that went out for an RFP was the temporary police station lease. Uh, it was, uh, in the best interest of the town to, uh, enter into an RFP process, to find a very competitive process. Um, and that process, uh, started, uh, on August 31st. Uh, requests can be made, um, for, uh, a copy of the RFP at the town accountant's office. Chief Procurement Officer Tammy Martin. You can, um, get those RFP requests, uh, through her and, um, respond back by August, O- October 31st at 11:00 a.m., um, in which the town will be, uh, accepting those up until then. Currently, we're working on an RFP, uh, for the Wright's Mills Recovery Master Plan. Uh, that's currently in a draft form. Uh, I envision also trying to, uh, reach out to our partners in, at CMR PC at some point to get some insight and some, uh, some of their thoughts and ideas on the RFP process. Um, I've looked at some areas in which other communities have done master plans to try to mold our, um, our RFP and to craft it in a way in which we will get, the town will get the best product possible, uh, for, uh, development, uh, not only around the mills, in the mills, and all of the spin-off effects, um, in town. Um, so we're in the process of, of, of drafting that. So we're in the process of drafting that. I was also, is there any questions on the RFPs or anything before I move into the next item? No. I was also notified by Chief Lavoy that we have a resignation pending in the fire department, which has created a vacancy. He signaled to me that he would like to get this vacancy filled as quickly as possible to, to make sure that there's enough coverage out there and that there has to be no overtime, access to overtime. So we went right into effect, we posted that position just this past week, that was posted on Monday. It will be advertised in the, in Turley Publications, it's also on our town's website, and he's accepting applications up until September sixteenth. It's been posted on Indeed as well, and we're hoping that, that he can find a qualified applicant by then. So we encourage any resident, if you're watching this evening, to go onto the website, if you have any interest, and, and look at the jobs that are posted on there. It would be great to fill it with a Warren resident. Also, I was contacted last week by our neighbors at the Warren Housing Authority. They had asked for some help in trying to recruit a executive director for that organization. Their executive director is retiring. I volunteered to help them because they are our neighbors, and we've created the posting that is posted on the town's website. It is posted in the building, it will be, it'll be posted on Indeed, and it will also be running in the Worcester Telegram Gazette paper. I know the tenants' association over there is very happy that we are helping them and assisting them at zero cost, zero cost to them, and I know they, they wanted me to look at some of the resumes and collect the resumes for them and ultimately hand them over to them as they come in. And we again encourage Warren residents to, to apply for the position. It is posted, and some of the qualifications are there as well. Also, last week, last Monday, I had an initial meeting with our school officials over at Quabog with regards to the town's Green Communities Grant that was awarded. We're in the early stages of assessing the grant and the costs and, and getting, getting some of the level of procurement done that is going to be required for the project. I envision a subsequent meeting shortly thereafter, this discussion tonight, that will also include our Chief Procurement Officer Tammy Martin, who was tied up at the moment with a lot of stuff this past week, so as soon as it lightens up a little bit in the accounting office, I want to include her in on, on the process as well, and she's going to be very instrumental in that process. We have progress on the tablets. Tablets have all come in from Amazon, they are currently charged, and I'm going to be working with Selectman Bellis to get the software downloaded onto those tablets, and we will get those installed within the next two weeks. So I wanted to thank the board for authorizing the expense. I think it will be a great tool for, to be used, especially for everybody's safety in the building, seeing if, you know, if people here are in the building is paramount. You will also find in your packets, I did receive a communication from Mass DEP. I know the letter says it was addressed to the Board of Health, but on the envelope, it was addressed to me, so I, I reviewed the letter, and it, and it would appear as though that the, the Mass DEP is requiring some additional testing for water samples and groundwater monitoring wells and, and surface water and leach stations at the landfill, and it's our, it's our polyfluor- fluorosicant substances, the PSFs that they're going to be testing for. So I immediately scanned and emailed the letter to the Warren Board of Health, notifying them that this is going to be a requirement from DEP. You will see in your packets that I did receive correspondence back from Brianna from the Board of Health, and that Barton La Judas is going to be doing the sampling at the landfill for the PSF, PFAS sampling at the Warren, the routine sampling, it will be beginning the first, in the beginning of September. She has that budgeted for, it, it appears as though that they're going to have to do a second round of sampling later on in the year, and the lab quote has gone up a little bit, so that we will probably have to address that at the special, which we will, but we're just planning for that in advance, so just making sure that they're in full compliance with DE, DEP, Mass DEP regulations, and that communications have been delivered to them, which they have. I'm also been working in communication with the Finance Committee to draft and develop a budget calendar coming up for our, our, our budget season, believe it or not. The Finance Committee has signaled that they're going to be meeting within the next couple weeks in September, mid-September, and hope to have a draft done and then brought to you guys for some review as well after their meeting. I'm also starting to compile a list of some items from departments that have mentioned to me, an official memo will go out of items that they anticipate that may have to go on to the fall special. So a memo will be going out shortly, asking all departments to compile a list and make sure that we have all the stuff ready for, for the fall special. Our next meeting, I anticipate, because Adam is, 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 is out, and I think Jerry, I don't know if you, you're not going to be here at the next meeting, right? No. So I anticipate next meeting, I did get all the quotes from Jerry, but I will have all the quotes ready for the second round of ARPA expenditures as well, and for you guys to review and anticipated for next week's meeting. It has been difficult getting with some quotes. Some companies have, have just not called back, some companies are so bogged down with, with work that they just don't have time to quote. I'm seeing that, that frustration in a lot of different fields currently, so it's very competitive out there, and the smaller the quote, I've noticed, the tougher to get the vendor to submit a quote because they'd rather attack a bigger project or a larger project that, that could possibly be out there. So it's difficult, but it's not impossible, so we are, we are working on that right now. And that's basically it for the, the supporting documentation you will find also in your packets reflecting some of the talking points for my report this evening is in, is in your packet as well.
Thank you very much, thank you for your presentation and what's going on. Does anybody from the public have any questions for the town administrator?
John Conrad, PSFs, is that what is colloquial known as forever chemicals?
Yeah, PFAS, yeah.
PFAS, yeah. PFAS.
It's getting everywhere, it's contaminating everything. Warren does have, is on the lower levels for PFAS, but it's everywhere. That's concerns we have with aerial spraying from, from mosquitoes that the state does because it's not the chemicals that they're spraying, but the containers that are used to do the spraying allows PFAS to get into the chemicals, and they disperse that through the communities, but it's, it's pretty much found everywhere now.
It's a forever chemical, it does not dissolve or break down like other chemicals.
And we're being proactive about it to, to make sure that we comply and have the proper testing that's, that's being done.
Anything else, sir? Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Anybody else have anything? Anybody from Zoom world? No? Okay. All right, moving on. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Ferrari.
Thank you.
Okay, comments and concerns? Does anybody have any comments or concerns?
I do not.
Me neither.
You sure? Okay. Anybody in the public? Comments and concerns? Zoom world?
How's Karen Dusty on Zoom? It's the third Dusty.
You apparently started the Zoom before you came here.
I did.
Do you have a cat? Dog?
I hear you have a cat.
They're watching that, they're watching the meeting. If they respond back, I'll be impressed. All right, so correspondence. Okay, we have Warren Youth Football and Share is doing their voluntary toll road as a fundraiser on September tenth, two thousand twelve, in the center of Warren and West Warren. They see a letter.
I received an email today from Stephanie Williams, and she just wanted to put it out there that they were going to do this toll, they've done it every year for the past three year, three or four years. I said that I wanted to bring it before our board because we discovered the parade. She said she did talk to you, Chief Valet? So normally, yeah, doesn't this fall under the parade thing where they have to get permission from you and?
Is that fun?
She said, well, she said she's never has before, and I said I'll bring it before you guys and you guys can decide.
Yeah, you've never had that before.
Well, Chief, if you may, do you feel as though that it's safe, what, what do you do over there?
Yeah, they've been doing it for years, they used, the two downtowns, they stand there and you kind of don't let the kids get in the road, you'd rather have the parents do it, combed off. Firefighters do it with their boots for collections.
So you do it every year?
Yeah.
So I'm good to let her know it's fine? Okay, sorry. I thought that's what you just said.
So we, we got an email from Stephanie Williams, and it says, my name's Stephanie Williams, and I'm fundraising coordinator for Warren Westbrookfield Youth Football and Share. For the past three years, we've done a voluntary toll road as a fundraiser. This year, our toll road will be on Sep, nine, ten, twenty-two, September tenth, nineteen twenty-two, oh, two thousand twenty-two, nine twenty-two, during the townwide yard sale. Will be set up downtown as well as West Warren. I just wanted to make sure that the proper channels were made aware. Thank you so much, Stephanie Williams. Again, it's a great cause, I don't see any issues with it. Chief, you have no concerns with it? Okay. Any questions?
No.
Mr. Bellis?
No questions.
I have no problem with it. I'd say we're good. I've done it each year. I don't see it as being a parade or anything like that for permit purposes, all they're doing is a fundraiser. That meets the standards, right?
What's that, I'm sorry?
It doesn't go, go into where it needs a permit, correct?
Well, they're not, they're not theoretically moving up and down the street if they're going to stay in one location. I, I was more concerned about the safety aspect of it with having a townwide tag sale and, you know, with kids and, and, you know, potentially, you know, coming in and out of the street areas, you know, has there been any congestion issues because of the townwide tag sale? And do you have any patrols that you will, you will have in that area? Are you dedicating, you know, anybody around there to keep an eye on that?
Yeah, the patrols will be on. Just make sure they're safe.
Yeah.
And Stephanie, she's great, she's not going to let any harm come to any kids or anything. She treats these kids like they're her own, so she's good about it, she wouldn't put them in any harm in any way, so I'm good with it. Good with it?
Yeah.
You good with it?
Yes.
So you're good? So next thing, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission requesting a sign-off on the fiscal quarterly report certification and reporting.
So this, I got all filled today. It is just them, they're all done with this, is ending, is, is completed, they just need to show that you say it is okay, so I just need a signature. They said how much they paid, what the fund was, the whole nine yards, and then there's a brief synopsis on the first two pages, and then on the last one, it just says it's final.
So there's no unpaid balances, and you're good with everything?
No.
Did you get a chance to review it?
No, this is the first I've seen it. Yeah, I, I would think it's, it's pretty standard, just closing out the quarter.
Yep. So I'm good with it. Mary, demand report.
Do you want to sign now or you want to sign after?
You got it?
David just needs to sign.
David just needs to sign.
I should find two little axes. Do I have my stickies?
I had to take them off to copy it for Derek.
Sorry.
Okay. Next thing is reporting NIAID coming into evaluation and moving the service. That's Northeast IT coming into evaluate, moving the server to the cable room. They'll give us a cost on how much it will be.
So Sean came Wednesday.
Okay.
And we went into the, the room where the server is. Before he came, we had Roger here to install some things and install the backup. And he did temperatures in the room and temperatures outside because they were thinking maybe one of the things is to put a fan or something in the door. And it didn't make any difference leaving the door open the entire hours he was here. Made no difference at all in there. So they decided the second option they gave us was to put a fan in the back wall. But the back wall is in the outside wall. So they'd have to go through the boiler room to get outside ventilation. And they said that would be too expensive. So then Sean came out on Wednesday and looked in the vault room and looked up in the ceiling to see if he had enough slack to put it upstairs. And he had, he believes he does have enough slack, but the bundles are too big for Northeast IT to do. So they have a gentleman that they have does it. So the last email I got from them saying that Doug, who is our representative, and a man named Brian Hawkworth will come out and then they will be able to give us a cost.
Yeah, Brian does their cabling.
Right. Brian does the cabling. And he's done work for us before.
Yeah. So everybody knows the reason why we're doing this is because we're going to move the servers out of that room, the vault room that we have it in right now, because it gets way too hot in the air. There's no air conditioning. There's no ventilation in that room. It's, it's a stuffy room and it heats up. And having a very hot room for the servers is just not good for the health of the servers. Weirs down the health of them, basically. So the best thing we could do to prolong the life of our servers and keep them working and correct is to get them to a cooler area, which would be upstairs in a metal cabinet that would be up in the WCAT 12's room where it's air conditioned and cooled off. Everybody knows the purpose of why. That's correct, right?
That is. 100 plus, they, when they said they wanted to drill a hole in the door, I said, this is a fireproof room for a reason. So you can't be drilling holes and putting fans in there.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Is that correct? You're like a IT guru on YouTube.
Yeah, no, the heat's not good.
Basic just.
The microprocessor in there already generates a ton of heat. And then you put it in a hot room and now, you know, you can't cool it.
Okay. All right. So we got that.
Okay. Then the last thing that I didn't get on the agenda because I found it in my box after I had printed all the agendas is a letter from the board of, the treasurer to the Board of Selectmen. It's in your file. It's about the tax title attorney.
So Dawn is really doing an amazing job with trying to get and recover tax funds, delinquents' taxes recovered back into the town coffers. She has been working with tax title attorneys and with, or, and her have been working to come up with a list in which they anticipate a tax title lien auction on November 2nd. And it will be posted. It will be made known and all the proper legal notifications will be sent out. And it's their hope that they will be able to recover these past due taxes and to generate some one-time revenue of interest to the town. It's, it's, it's the hope and it's the goal that this will bring in a substantial amount of money back into the, to the coffers.
That's good.
So, so she's notifying the board that her office and her have the authority to do this and she's going to be pursuing this. And I know that her and Carrie have been, have been working back and forth on, on the list and the maps and they've been meeting along with the, the tax title attorney. It's very commendable and it's, it's going to benefit the town.
Absolutely. We're all going to pay our taxes and I think it's a great thing for our, our town to be able to do that and everybody share within the burden and for those of individuals that, and I've heard some people have never paid taxes to our town the entire time they've lived here and owned a house. And that is very concerning because I know my tax bill is paid and, you know, I, I believe it's taken out, you know, quarterly, I believe. Yeah, it's quarterly. So it's paid for my mortgage. But we pay our taxes, make sure that's current. And I'm sure everybody else that is paying taxes in town would like everybody else to pay their fair share also. So definitely, yeah. I commend Dawn on doing this and getting this done and making sure it happens. And I'm sure she's very flexible in making sure that people pay their taxes so we don't have to go into a tax title situation. Ultimately is just making sure that the taxes are paid, that's owed.
These delinquencies have been substantial for, for a long period of time.
Yeah, I know of at least one that has never paid taxes the entire time they've owned their house.
The problem is, is we never know when they're going to get through the court system. We finally got three last year, but we, they had been in the court system for years before we actually came through it.
Yeah, courts take a long time with this stuff.
So this is avoiding court. This is selling the lien to a third party. So the town would recover the, the, the delinquency and it would sell the lien to a, to a third party collection party. So avoiding costly legal expenses for a smaller community. And usually legally, usually what gets sucked up in the housing court is the bigger communities like Springfield's, the Worcester's, the Boston's. They get preference in, in the housing court to move their cases forward. In the smaller towns, in the smaller communities, is, it's, it's, it's a struggle to get through the process.
Yeah. Very good. Did she need a, she's just notifying us?
She just wants notification, yeah.
Cool. Very good. Anything else? All right. Did you have any questions?
No, I didn't.
Derek?
I don't know if I missed any comments in the series. I just want to say kudos to the parks for the fireworks. They were awesome and people will enjoy them.
Yep. Yeah, actually, with comments and concerns on that, yeah, they did an amazing job.
Very nice.
It was good. It was nice meeting you, meeting your mom, too.
Thank you.
Very nice. Should move her off this way. But yeah, awesome job with fireworks. I look forward to seeing what they're going to do next year. And the band was pretty good, too.
Yeah.
Tequila Mockenbird. Sing very well. Next meeting is going to be September 7th?
8th.
It's the 8th. I get Wednesday instead of Thursday, sorry.
So correction to that. September 8th at 6:00 PM or September 15th?
Are we doing every other or we're going back to every week, was my question?
Well, we don't really have a whole lot on the agenda right now, do we?
Yeah. Jerry's going to be away too next week.
Yeah, Jerry's away.
Oh, we don't know.
Adam's away. And we're not really getting a lot coming in front of us right now. So it doesn't really make sense.
Take the time while we can.
To take the time, yeah. Enjoy it while we can before all the fiscal stuff starts coming in and everything else starts hitting us. I'm good with meeting on September 15th instead.
We're meeting on a Monday, too, right?
Yep, on the 19th.
Right.
Yeah, I'm good.
So, so scratch September 8th. We're not going to be meeting on September 8th. But we will be meeting on Thursday, September 15th, 2022. And we have a tentative meeting for September 19th at the school. And that is a Monday. And that would be a joint meeting with the school in Westbrookfield, pending the approval by the school board, so, the school committee. All right. So we got our set date and?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor.
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Steve Billy's aye.
David Dufrain, aye. We are adjourned.